Counselors present, Zepari, Schmidt, Atwater, Granatowsky, Heath, Franco, and Parker. Counselors absent, O'Bree. And at this point, I'd like to announce the resignation of Counselor Morawcik. He resigned effective Monday for personal reasons. And I'd like to thank Counselor Morawcik for his service to the town on behalf of the constituents. New business 2018-0107 Connecticut Partnership Plan 2.0. And we have a gentleman from the Comptroller's Office with us this evening if you'd like to come up, sir. And you could introduce yourself. Yes, please, thank you. And just, it's being recorded, so if you could just make sure you're close enough to the mic that they can pick it up on the camera.
Okay. Good afternoon, everybody. My name is Bernie Slowak. I'm from the State Comptroller's Office. I want to thank you for having me this afternoon. I'm here to talk about the partnership plan which my office administers. I hope everybody has a packet with them which I'll be going over. There is a lot of information we're going to go over. I'm sure there'll be other questions towards the end, and I'm definitely happy to answer any of those towards the end of the presentation. But with that said, on the front cover, there's a website. That's osc.ct.gov/CTPartner. That's a website that's hosted by my office. It's a very good website to go on. I would encourage you, if you have a minute or two, to jump on there. You don't have to log on, but there's a lot of information. Everything we go over, plus a lot more. You can look up your doctors. We post the rates, frequently asked questions, the full SPD to look up coverage, and then all the links to the carriers. So definitely a good site to jump onto. With that said, I'm going to start with the PowerPoint that looks like this. It has the bridge in the background. This is just going high level over what the actual plan entails. So for those of you that don't know, what is Partnership 2.0? It's legislation that gives the comptroller the authority to offer the State of Connecticut Employee Health Plan to municipalities and boards of ed in the state. We have fixed monthly rates that renew on July 1st of each year, which is in conjunction with the state's renewal. However, you can join the first of any month. I believe you guys are already on a July cycle, so if that's the case, you would have a full 12-month rate. However, if you wanted to join the plan on, let's say, January 1st, you would have that rate until June of the following.
Excuse me. Counselors Zepari?
Oh.
It's picking up on the microphone. Thank you. Go ahead.
No problem. So if you were to join the plan in January, you would have that rate for six months, basically till the end of June, and then everybody goes on to a July 1st cycle. With that said, I did print out an example of current rates which are directly behind, and they say State of Connecticut 2.0 pooling on the top. These rates are good quarterly, basically, for July, August, and September of this year. So if you were to join the 1st of July, August, or September, these would be the rates that the town or the board is paying on behalf of their employees. This is the full cost for medical and pharmacy. I'm sure there's an employee share. We don't get involved in that, but this is the full cost that we'd be charging the town or the board of ed. You can see we break it out into certain categories between the actives, the pre-65 retirees, Medicare retirees, those that have A and B, and then we have a post-65 retirees for those not eligible for Medicare. We also have a three-tier rate, so single, double, and family. We're also open to just taking the active group. I understand you may have a lot of retirees. If you have a plan that has a better rate elsewhere and want to keep retirees there, that's possible. If you want to split the two, or you can bring all the actives and the retirees over. Obviously, those are some numbers you want to crunch and figure out what's the best So we do have quarterly rates, and those are only for the new groups that join in a particular year. So like I said, if you were coming in in January, you would have a different set of rates, but then everybody goes on to a July 1st cycle and has the same exact rate for a full year. These are monthly premium equivalent rates which are based on the state's overall claims experience. So partnership is what we call true pooling. If you were to join our plan, your claims would be factored into next year's rates along with every other group in Partnership 2.0, and there's approximately 90 of those, a bit over 30,000 members total, as well as the state employees and retirees and all their dependents, which is over 200,000 members. So you have one big pool, and the benefit of that is that you have the security in terms of your claims renewals. Because we're a self-insured group, and it's such a large group, our fluctuations are very minimal from year to year in terms of renewal increases. This year, we had an 8% rate increase. Last year was a 5, and the year before that was a 5. So we don't have those swings that some smaller groups may have where it's 2% one year, maybe 20% the next. It's all fairly stable. Are there any questions on the rates so far? No?
No.
Okay. So going on to page three, where you can also follow along in the color copy on page two and three for your benefit plan offerings. So for the medical plan, we offer the State of Connecticut Point of Service Plan which is administered by United Healthcare Oxford. Members have access to the Oxford Freedom Select Network with the United Choice Plus RAP for seamless national coverage. So the way that works in the State of Connecticut, New Jersey, and Lower New York, we use a local network called the Oxford Freedom. If you were to go and ask your doctor if they participate with partnership, they probably don't know what that is, but if you ask them if they take Oxford Freedom, they would definitely know what that is. Also, on our website, if you were to search for your doctors, the first box you click on would be Oxford Freedom if you're looking in the State of Connecticut, Jersey, or Lower New York. And then the second box under that is the United Choice Plus. So you have access throughout the entire country, as well as Canada and U.S. territories. You're just using a different network called the United Choice Plus Network, which is a national network outside of those three states. We also have something called the Health Enhancement Program, or what we call HEPC, which is a comprehensive wellness program. I have a couple pages dedicated to that towards the end of the presentation, so I'll go more in-depth into exactly how that works. For your pharmacy, which is also on page five of your color packet, we have a four-tier copay structure for maintenance and acute drugs, and the plan is administered by CVS-Caremark. So you can see on page five of the color packet, we have basically three categories. You have your maintenance, your non-maintenance, and then your HEPC chronic conditions. I'll explain the HEPC chronic conditions a little bit later. But you can see the maintenance and non-maintenance have the same exact copays. The reason we break it out is for the network. So for your non-maintenance drugs, it's short-term supplies, 30-day supplies are less, like your antibiotics, your pain pills, et cetera. You can go to any pharmacy and get those paid, excuse me, get those filled, and you'll just pay the appropriate copay. For the maintenance drugs, you have the option of doing mail order through CVS-Caremark or staying in the maintenance drug network. Now, what that means is CVS went out to all the pharmacies and asked if they wanted to join the network. A lot of the major grocery chains agreed, including Big Y, Stop &amp; Shop, Shop Right, Walmart, Target, a couple Mom &amp; Pops as well. The two major competitors that are not in the network are Rite Aid and Walgreens. So if you're getting long-term drugs filled, 90-day supplies, things like diabetes medication, cholesterol, blood pressure, things of that nature, you cannot go to Rite Aid or Walgreens, but you can go to any of those other ones that I mentioned or do mail order. Either way, you're getting a 90-day supply at a 30-day cost. The list is also available on our website. I have one here with me, listed by state and then by town. But basically, any CVS in the country, Stop &amp; Shop that has a pharmacy, et cetera. So the next portion is dental, and it looks like this. It's a single loose leaf. It says Cigna Dental Partnership Plans Effective 7/1/18. We basically offer four separate fully insured PPO plans through Cigna Healthcare, as well as an HMO option. You can see what the appropriate rates are on the bottom. Those are per employee per month again. Basically, the four plans are your PPO plans. If you have something custom or wanted something custom, we can put you in contact directly with Cigna to provide a quote as well. The good thing about these plans are they're open networks. So what that means is the in-and-out of network benefits are exactly the same. So let's say, for example, you're getting a filling covered at 80%. If you're going to an out-of-network dentist, you're still paying 20%, but you're paying 20% of a higher rate because in-network, they would give you a discount per their pricing. We also pay a 95th percentile of out-of-network claims. The last part for benefits is directly behind the dental, and it says State of Connecticut Partnership Plan 2.0 Vision. So we also offer a fully insured vision hardware rider. The reason it's for hardware only is because routine eye exams and refractions are covered once a year under our medical plan. So if you currently offer coverage for things like glasses or contacts, this may be an option for you as well. And again, there is a separate rate involved with that per employee per month. Going to page four on how to apply. So once a decision is made, the person in HR or the broker can fill out an application online. It's the same website that's on the front cover, but we look at the application in two ways. One is a full group, and the other is a partial. A full group, we consider to be the entire town or the entire board of ed, or both if wanted. If you're an entire or a full group, you simply complete the application, you're automatically accepted. However, if you are a partial group, meaning any part of the entire town or any part of the board of ed, for example, let's say you had two out of five unions that were interested, that would be considered a partial group. If that's the case, we do have discretion in terms of acceptance of the group. However, instead of looking at claims history, we're looking at demographic factors. In that case, what we're looking for are age, gender, and tier. So we'd ask for a census of the group requesting to come on to the plan, and then a census of the group they are coming out of, whether it's the board of ed or the town. And in that case, we do a comparison of demographics from the group they're coming out of, not to the state. So we just want to make sure there isn't any kind of adverse selection there. Once I have that information, the turnaround is about a week, and the healthcare cost containment committee at the state approves or denies acceptance into the plan based on that rate factor, excuse me, the risk factor. It's also worth noting that all groups joining the plan cannot offer their employees any other medical or pharmacy plan other than partnership. The whole point here is, again, to provide, protect the state as well as other partnership groups from adverse selection. We understand our plan is a rich plan. If you were to offer our plan, plus maybe a cheaper option, HSA, the people that really need our plan would take ours, and those that don't would take the cheaper option. The next page, page five. There is a five-year commitment level from the town or the board side, not an individual level. So that means you would offer our plan for at least three years. If you needed to leave early, you can. However, there's a penalty in place. Basically, we're looking at a simple premium versus claims, and if we paid out more in claims than you paid in in premium, and you do try to leave after one year, it's that difference between the 2% or 5% of the total premium paid in the last year. After two years, that amount goes down to 3%, and then after three years, there is no assessment either way. So the next pages are dedicated to HEPC because I know for a lot of groups, it is a new concept. So what is HEPC? It's the Health Enhancement Program, which is a wellness program attached to the State Employee Health Plan. It targets preventive care and chronic disease management. So for preventive care, the program requires members enrolled in the state health plan to get age-appropriate wellness exams and preventive screenings, and we'll get to that on the next page. For chronic condition management, the program targets the following chronic conditions. Those are diabetes, asthma or COPD, heart disease, heart failure, hyperlipidemia, which is high cholesterol, and hypertension, which is high blood pressure. There's a $0 copay for office visits related to those targeted conditions, and there's also lower copays for maintenance drugs used to treat those targeted conditions of 0, 5, and 1250. So the example I always use is, let's say you do have high blood pressure, you're going for a follow-up every six months or so. Instead of paying your $15 in-network copay, that's waived to zero, and if your doctor puts you on prescription pills, you're getting a generic 90-day supply for zero as well. And the whole point there is to take away any kind of financial burdens for those people who do have chronic conditions. So the next page on page seven are what we call the HEPC grid or HEPC requirements. Keep in mind, these are minimum requirements of everybody enrolled in the plan. I always get the question, you know, I like to see my doctor every year for a physical. Am I covered? Absolutely. However, the person next to you in the same age group may not want to go as often as you. So we outline minimum requirements per age group, which is on the top, and then the actual requirement on the left. So for example, let's say you're between the ages of 30 to 39. You're required to have a preventive or a physical every three years, a vision exam every seven, dental cleanings at least one per year. Our plan would cover you for two, cholesterol screenings every five, breast cancer, if applicable, is as recommended, and then cervical cancer, if applicable, is every three years. Keep in mind, this is required of everybody enrolled, so if you have a dependent, a spouse, a child, et cetera, they are also required based on their age group. So on page eight. Upon a group's enrollment into the partnership plan, all members are automatically enrolled into the Health Enhancement Program. The program is managed by Care Management Solutions, or what we call CMSI. They're an affiliate of Connecticut Care. They're local here in Farmington, Connecticut. They've been handling the HEPC accounts since it started at the state in 2012, I believe. This is all they do. They're very good at what they do. They simply handle the state and partnership accounts. The good thing about having a third party is a lot of people are concerned that the state is going to know their personal health information, and that's definitely not the case. If you were to call me and ask, you know, what am I missing for HEPC? I can't tell you because I don't have access to that. People would work directly with Care Management Solutions to solve any problems or get info that they're missing. But members do have access throughout the year to a HEPC web portal which shows their compliance status. So once you enroll, you can jump on to cthepc.com. You would have a username and password, and on the home screen, there'd be a list of what's required of you based on your age group, and there's a green check if you've done it and a red X if you haven't. And it's all done through a claims feed. So if you're going to the doctor under our plan, let's say you're getting a physical, he would code it as a physical. Oxford would get a copy to pay it, and then Care Management Solutions would get a copy as well, and they would update your records behind the scene. It's usually about a two to three, two to three weeks lag time with most carriers. However, there are exceptions. Let's say you just got a colonoscopy two years ago. We obviously don't want you to go ahead and do it just under our plan. If you can show proof, they'll give you credit for it. We have forms that a doctor can fill out, and then you can submit it, or if you show discharge paperwork, they'll give you credit manually for that. Members also have access to a dedicated customer service team at Care Management Solutions, as well as a dedicated health navigator. Like I said, we have our own team, not only at Care Management, but at all the carriers that specifically work at this, for the state and partnership accounts. At Care Management, they also have nurses on call. Let's say you had a chronic condition, wasn't really sure where to turn, you can call one of the nurses, and they can help you with that. So on page nine, members do have one full calendar year to become acclimated with the program and meet their HEPC requirements. So for example, if your group was to join the plan on July 1st of 18, members would have until December 31st of 19 to meet those HEPC requirements. That's because HEPC compliance is based on a calendar year. So if you're coming on the plan any other month besides January, you're getting over one full calendar year. Again, worth mentioning, all family members enrolled in the plan must meet their age-specific requirements in order for the employee to be considered HEPC compliant, and communications and reminders are sent to members throughout the year. So even if you don't want to be proactive and go on to the website, and about the fall time, in this case of 2019, you'll get an actual letter to your house stating what you're still missing for HEPC, if in fact you are still missing some things. So it's not a surprise at the end of the year. And then the last page. So what happens if you're non-compliant? Employees that do not meet their HEPC requirements are considered non-compliant into the HEPC program, and the following penalty is implemented. There's an additional $100 per month billed premium that becomes part of the employee share contribution, and there's a $350 individual deductible, up to $1,400 per family, attached to the in-network medical plan. This deductible applies to non-copay-related services. However, once a member does complete the missing requirements, they are eligible to get back to a HEPC compliant status by filling out and submitting to CMSI an application for reinstatement into the plan. Members will be reinstated the first of the following month. Okay. Are there any questions? I know it's a lot of information to take in. Yes?
Counselor Parker. So if a family or a family member, an individual and family member has to see any of the doctors more than once, or if they're required, is that going to count against them?
No. So keep in mind, the HEPC requirements do not dictate your coverage. There's simply minimum requirements to remain compliant. So like I said, if you had to go for a physical every year, you're covered. If you had a family history of, let's say, breast cancer, and you had to get more mammograms, something like that, that's definitely covered.
Or what about vision? So if they have to go more than once a year, can they go more than once a year?
So if it's medically related, yes. The routine eye exams are once a year, but if there was, you know, something that happened, they got something in their eye that's considered medical, that's separate, that would be covered. Yep. Yes?
Counselors Zepari.
The HEPC requirements. The premium, as I understand, is going to be paid by the town. But now with someone who is not HEPC compliant, they're going to be required to pay 80 up to $100 or $350 out of their own pockets.
Right.
If they don't, will they be non, will they be ineligible for healthcare for routine problems?
So the way it works is when we send a bill, we're sending it to somebody at the board of ed, at the town, et cetera, in charge of finances, and then it's up to you guys to do an employee share, I would assume. Once somebody is non-compliant, you would basically up that employee share to cover that $100 a month out of their paycheck. The deductible would come separate from the doctor if, in fact, they went to see a doctor. So they would get basically hit twice. Once is the premium from you, and then the other would be the bill in the mail from the doctor's office.
So they wouldn't get the copay, is that right? You wouldn't provide the copay if they're not compliant with HEPC?
For those drugs, right, the HEPC drug copays, the lower copays would go away, so they would have to pay the extra $5 or $10 for those, and then they would have to pay the $15 office visit. But the plan is still intact, so they would just have an added deductible, and then a few of the copays would go up. And keep in mind, again, that's not until 2020 in this case. If you were to join for 7-1, by the time everything is implemented and they're deemed non-compliant. So basically, Care Management Solutions is going to work with these people. They'll give them a grace period of about six months in the following year, and once they true up that list, they'll send you a list saying, these 10 people are going to be non-compliant. Starting January or August 1st, please deduct the extra $100. Then they'll follow up. If maybe one person was compliant in August or September, they would let you know the following month to remove that charge, and they would be put back to HEPC compliance
Counselor Atwater?
You mentioned, excuse me, you mentioned that in the HEPC program that there's zero copay, and you give a break to people with chronic conditions and so forth.
Correct.
But clearly, in my mind, the reason you're doing that is because if you get them to go see their doctor and they take care, better care of themselves, the cost is less.
Exactly.
But I guess my question is, why would anybody not go see their doctor? Meaning, what is your history with people not qualifying for the HEPC?
Yeah, so I mean, there's always those people that are going to be against it, being forced to do something. So at the state, year to year, we have about a 96% compliant rate for HEPC. Partnership is a little bit lower because these are all new groups. It's in the 80% right now, but it's obviously going up. So again, some people refuse to do it. You know, some people may be scared to go. They'd rather not know. So there's a variety of reasons. But yes, these are very minimum requirements. Most people do this anyway. That's why we have such a high compliance rate.
Are there other questions at this point? No? Okay. Did you have other things you wanted to talk about?
One thing I did want to point out, which I didn't really go over, but it says site of service. It looks like this. It's one more addition. I just wanted to point it out. So at the state, we had some plan changes on October 1st to help with the budget. Our state unions agreed to these plan changes. I wanted to highlight this because it is a little different from what it used to be, and it's called site of service. So for outpatient lab radiology and imaging services in the State of Connecticut in West Chester, they tiered the in-network. It used to be covered 100% in-network, 80, 20% out-of-network. What they did was they came up with a list of preferred labs and radiology services that are still considered in-network preferred and are covered 100%. That list is available at the website below. It tends to be your Quests in the state, your Jefferson Radiology. It's listed by town, so you can take a look when you get a chance. But if they're in-network and not on that list, it's an 80, 20% co-insurance, and then if they're completely out-of-network, it's a 60, 40. So I at least wanted to point that out because that's not really illustrated in the color packet. We printed those out prior to March 1st when this was implemented.
Counselor, I'm sorry. Mr. Bird?
At the council of governments this morning, I saw a presentation by the comptroller. He mentioned that you're working on some other plans for the medical part, that there'll be some other options in the future?
He might be. I'm not privy to that.
Okay.
Unfortunately, sorry. It's very possible.
Okay.
Yeah. But this plan itself is agreed to by the state unions, and it was just verified last year, so it's good until 2027 unless legislation agrees to open it up again. So these plans won't be changing from year to year.
So I had a question about enrollment. They had, our human resource director, assistant town manager, had run some numbers for us, and it's not looking like it's favorable at this point to move everybody in at once.
Right.
If, it's interesting to see about the partial groups moving in. So could we do this as union contracts come up, and we could negotiate and bring union by union and bargaining unit by bargaining unit in? Is there any limit or prohibition on doing this piecemeal if we're moving along all the bargaining units?
So not really. The only thing is, obviously, you want to make sure that it's not a riskier group because if that's the case, they may get denied. Obviously, the law of large number, the more people you have, the better chance you have. So that's my recommendation. But yes, we've had groups that maybe the majority of the group came on, and then a year later or a few months later, the rest of the group joined. The good thing about our website is we can do a partial pre-application. So if you had a group in mind and just wanted to know, I can run the numbers, and there's no commitment.
Okay. Mr. Bird?
I just wanted to clarify. Bob didn't run the numbers. Our third-party administrator ran the spreadsheets, and then Bob and his staff reviewed it before, and then Bernie got a copy, too.
So have you, you said you would run the numbers for us. Did you run the numbers that were given to you?
No. So I'll run the numbers of the demographic factors through the census. We don't really do a financial analysis. It's a lot of work. It's a lot of responsibility. So we leave it up to each group. That's why we post the rates and the plan and say, you know, kind of compare it to what you have, and let us know if it works.
Okay.
Yeah.
Are there any other questions at this point? Or do you have any questions for Mr. Zagami? I think we have a lot of reading to do, and Mr. Zagami, did you want to come up and speak? Could you please use the mic though, because no one's recording except for the AV people?
Thank you.
Thank you.
One of the questions I had was regarding the coverage. A lot of times when we've been looking at the southeastern Connecticut pot, we're always having problems with, you know, which groups would take us on, which doctors. So how have you made out with that?
Yeah, so that's a good question in terms of the network. So the network we're using is a local network. Oxford Freedom tends to be stronger than the national network. It was actually developed in Fairfield County. What we can do for groups, and what we have done in groups, is run a disruption report. Basically, we'll take a look at all the providers you've been to in the last 12 months for the entire board, the entire town, whichever group. We'll send it to Oxford, and they'll do basically a side-by-side and tell you this percentage of doctors are in-network. From experience, it tends to be about mid-90%. Again, it depends on group to group, but I can definitely run that for you on a group level to kind of give you some perspective into which doctors are in-network, which are out. Also, on an individual basis, like I said, they can go on the website, search, or they can call their doctors and ask if they take Oxford Freedom. But yeah, we'd be happy to do a disruption report.
The other question I had was, when you're looking at, we're running like a 94%. You don't look at all the, you know, all of the different types of cases individually or anything, but we're running about 94% of expected claims.
Yep.
On the town side, and about 88% of claims on the board of ed side. Would that kind of make, does that sound like something that we'd be more eligible for?
So honestly, we don't even look at claims in this perspective. If you came on as a full, it's an automatic. Otherwise, the only scrutiny we have is with demographic factors. So, if you were to say, I want to come in as a partial group, we wouldn't even ask you for your claims experience, since that has no factor in terms of the way the law was written.
Do you mean to come in as a whole group? You wouldn't ask for the demographics or-
Excuse me. We wouldn't ask for claims at all from either group.
Okay.
As a whole group, we wouldn't ask for demographics. As a partial, we would. Yes.
Okay.
Yep.
What about, tell me a little bit about retirees.
Yep. Yeah.
Our retirees are not on Medicare, is that correct, Mr. Zagami?
There are some on. It depends on whether you're pre-65 or post. And then we've got different for, there's a difference with the Board of Ed. I think they've had a low number or success with that. Am I right? Can we speak to that?
We have a fair amount of non-OSF employees who are not eligible for Medicare in 1986.
So, that's kind of increased our numbers for having to, that's why our, when it comes down to our retirees, you see a large number of our claims. That's where our claims really is the, the thick part of the claims is the retirees.
Yeah, so, we accommodate for retirees. Like I said, we have that pre-65 rate. We have a Medicare rate, which is very attractive. We actually just went to Medicare Advantage on the 1st of January. So, if you have retirees that are enrolled in parts A and B, they have a much lower rate. But to accommodate those that never paid into it, we do have that fourth category. Understandably, it is a high rate, so we understand that. And that's kind of why I mentioned, if you wanted to keep your retirees elsewhere, if you had a better deal, you know, that's fine from our perspective. It really kind of comes down to the numbers.
Mr. Burt?
Now, I see the biggest cost difference in the side-by-side is the 65-plus, not the 65-plus not eligible, but just generally 65-plus. You know, can you explain to me further why there's such a cost difference in that category?
So, you mean the last category? Because the Medicare-
Go ahead.
I was going to say, the Medicare retiree is less than $230 a month per member. So, that's why I think if you don't have a retiree that's eligible for Medicare, then they are in that much higher category. And it sounds maybe like that's where the population might be. In terms of Board of Ed retirees, a lot of those will take the TRB or the Teachers' Retirement Board, and that's fine. Again, that's just another plan, which happens all the time with our Boards of Ed.
Were you talking about the comparison that was generated?
Yeah, it's an idea.
Yes, I wasn't able to dive that deep into it, but I assume that's what it is. Because otherwise, the Medicare retiree rate would be much, either much lower than that. I don't know what you're currently paying for Medicare Advantage if in fact you offer that.
Mr. Burt, did you have anything else?
No, that's fine.
Okay. Do any of the counselors have questions at this point? Counselor Heath.
How exactly do you know who's qualified for Medicaid, who isn't?
So, we leave that up to your administration. They're going to ask for a Medicare ID number for those that have the red, white, and blue card, basically. If you were to sign up for Medicare Advantage, there's a separate team from United that handles it. They're still the parent company, they're United Healthcare, but it's a different team than the team that enrolls you into the act of the plan. So, they basically work with you. There are certain Medicare rules that they have to abide by in terms of an opt-out period. So, they kind of walk you down that road. But basically, they're asking for that HICAN number to show proof that they're enrolled in Medicare. Good.
I actually mean, how do you, like, why are some of our employees eligible for Medicare and some are not?
Oh, asking me? I-
That's a Mr. Zagami question.
Well, I think part of it is, is when you went back to looking at the older contracts, there was different deals and there's different groups that they all belong to. So, they followed the contracts earlier, which we still follow the contracts in most of our collective bargaining agreements. But there were some very rich plans historically, and they're still part of them.
It doesn't look as hard. So, it's not that there's no town employees that aren't eligible, Medicare eligible. There's just those 15 Board of Ed. It's just that we don't require them to go into Medicare. That's the key. You know, we don't require it. It's not that they're not eligible for it, it's just that forced.
So, something like that would have to be negotiated with each bargaining unit?
Right. Because historically, they've been, almost in all our contracts, even if you go backwards, which we did, you see that they are following whatever the current contract is. So, some of them way back when had PPOs that paid almost virtually zero, or virtually zero back then. They're still on that same plan.
Go ahead.
Another question for Bob. Just generalizing, we have a lot of different contracts, but can you, you brought, sorry, you brought up that retirees could be done at a different point in time. Is that possible through our contracts? Could we, you know, can you have a different plan to any retirees in the actives?
Well, not really, because in our current contracts, they're all fault, they're just all follow the contract that's in place. So, in other words, if the steelworkers were in contract negotiations right now, they become high deductible health plan, then their retirees, the retiring will follow that same, that same plan.
So, we certainly do not want to take our current retirees and give them a worse healthcare plan, right? That's not, that's not the goal here. The goal is to maintain or improve their coverage. But the goal is also to recognize that healthcare is a very huge chunk of our budget, and it's increasing every single year. So, we're trying to look at all the options and see what's, if there's anything we can do to honor our employees, but still honor our taxpayers. So, that's what, that's the dilemma we're in at this point. Did you have your hand up? I'm sorry, Counselor-
No.
Okay. Anyone else have questions? I think, I know at least myself, I'm going to want to read more and try to do some more investigation on this. But there's a lot of good information here, and I thank you for coming. Oh, I'm sorry.
Do you want to, maybe anybody has questions, you can funnel them to me or Bob, and then Bob will funnel them and get all the answers at once.
That would be great. Did you, I'm sorry, you had your hand up. Did you want to say something?
Oh, I just-
Could you, could you come up, please? We need to capture it for the video, please? And if you could just say your name and your capacity, please.
Sure. My name's Lori Lapine. I'm the Director of Human Resources at the Board of Education. I just wanted to give one clarifying point about the question about who's Medicare eligible and who's not. There is a provision that it was a state regulation that pre-1986, teachers were not eligible to participate in Medicare. So, that is driving some of that for the Board of Education. There is a small number of individuals where by state regulation, they weren't eligible. So, I just wanted to clarify that.
So, does that regulation exist anymore?
No. It, anyone pre-1986 is still, falls under that requirement, but it does no longer exist, and they're now eligible, and we do require them to enroll.
So, the board requires employees to enroll in Medicare, but the town does not?
They do now, yes.
Well, I'm not sure about the town, but the Board of Ed does require.
The town does, the town does not.
The town does not require it. Okay.
Other than, I don't know about non-union, Bob, or non-union.
Sorry. Thank you, Ms. Lapine.
No, we haven't. That's, that's fallen under the same thing. There's encouragement, but there's not been, you know, they get to follow the same terms of agreement that, you know, the, that the union folk have all got to.
Okay. Is there anything else? Counselor Franco, and then Obray.
I'm not privy to all the Medicare rules and regulations, but isn't there at a certain age, people are required to sign up?
That's, that's, that's not exactly the way it goes, because we've had, we've had people actually stay on the plans as long as they're on our, our health plan, and they've been retirees, and they write them off at the time. And then with the collective bargaining agreement, they can remain on it. Can you switch them off? That's one of the things that, we've been talking to our consultant recently, and we have a meeting, John and all of us Board of Ed. We've been looking to see if we can come up with anything that's comparable and then start to say to some of the retirees that are already retired, to look at them and say, hey, let's, you know, this is pretty comparable. It's not going to cost you really any more money. Can we now, you know, get you on those plans? It's a little bit of a, it would probably take some negotiating and everything, but we've been the last two months kind of diving into that.
I just thought there was, at some age, there was a requirement that you have to sign up. And because I know somebody who has, like, military insurance, and at a certain age, they had to sign up for it.
Yeah, well, the military TRICARE that they go through is, that's kind of complex, and it seems like a lot of the TRICARE people still share, when they retire, they're still sharing our same plans that we're on. That's, they use part of theirs and part of ours.
Right.
Yeah.
I just thought there was, like, I thought there was some kind of requirement that you had to. You get a notice from the government saying you have to sign up.
Yeah, we still have those people on that.
Okay. Counselor Obray.
I should have gone sooner. Questions, go on. I think, actually, she asked my question. I think we need to get some answers on some of the, on that particular question. Because I think there is a time that you have an opportunity to do it. Got to find out. Got to get some answers.
Anyone else?
Oh, yeah.
Okay. Well, if there are no other questions or comments at this time, this musical interlude, if you have questions, please put them in writing to Mr. Burt, and then he will forward them to the appropriate people. And we thank you very much for coming down. We appreciate it.
Thanks for having me.
It's, it's very helpful for us to hear these things and hopefully learn more about it and find ways to help everybody.
Sounds good.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Do you, I'm sorry, do you have an extra packet that I could leave for the minutes, please? Thank you very much. Okay. Yes, Mr. Burt?
I was going to mention, I looked it up. If you're on a, on a health plan through your employer currently, you don't have to go to Medicare.
And if you're not, you're required to.
Typically, other than some plan, they might have something else, you know, other requirements.
So, if you don't have it, you are required to. Is that how it works?
I have to, I have to-
Thank you again.
Actually, do-
Counselor Obray?
I'm just wondering, are they, do you think using the insurance here rather than buying a supplement for the Medicare?
Are you directing that to Mr. Burt?
Yeah. I don't know if he knows the answer or not. But when you, when you're older and you have to get a supplement insurance, and then they put it together with Medicare. But maybe what they're doing is using the insurance instead of buying a supplement.
It might be. I, I'm not an expert on that.
Okay.
It sounded like they're just staying completely on the town insurance rather than doing anything else.
Yeah. That would be something that we should bargain for, because if Medicare, if they go onto Medicare and we're, then have them use this insurance as a supplement, it reduces the liability to the insurance company, and it should reduce the premium that we have to pay for it because of the liability reduction. I, I should think that we would press for that. To have, have people have an insurance policy that's provided by the federal government and then to ignore that because they want to get what they can from the town is stupid. And I think we have to proceed to, to make it imperative that people get on Medicare where they're eligible, and then also use our insurer to say, hey, for these people who are on Medicare, we don't want to pay the full premium that you're asking, because you're not providing the full service.
Though, just so you know, many municipalities require you to get off the plan and go to Medicare at that age, so we'll look at all options.
So, at retirement, they require their employees to leave the employee health program and go to Medicare?
Once they're eligible for Medicare.
Once they're eligible?
A lot of, a lot of times, not every place, but a lot.
Has that been your experience in other places you've worked?
The other thing is, this is not a point-of-service plan that we're being presented from the state, the partnership plan. This requires that you use a panel of physicians that are in pharmacy providers that have been previously selected by the insurance company. That's, that's an in-network plan. If you don't use it and you go outside, there's a heavy penalty to be paid in copayments. Now, a point-of-service plan, it doesn't make any difference where you go to get your doctor treatment. They pay the same, same amount. But when you get into this, this type of thing, they may call themselves a point-of-service plan, but they're not. This is an in-house network. And, and that means that people are not covered, for instance, when they travel. If they get sick when they're traveling and they go to a doctor outside, they're not in-network anymore, and then they have to pay the out-of-network fees.
I don't know that that's, that that's correct. But that's a question that we could, that we could definitely ask. So, perhaps if you commit that to writing, and then we could submit that in as well. Anything, did you have a question?
I was just going to make a motion.
Okay. Well, let's wait and see if anybody else has anything they want to ask. Are there any other comments? Counselor Obray?
Do you know if, you know, there's choices as to when you can go onto Medicare? You know, '62, '65. So, I assume they can make the choice.
Yes.
Please?
Yeah.
I just stay comfortable there.
Yes. Yeah, they can make that choice.
So, that would be something-
It's just like you could make the choice of going on Social Security earlier.
Right. Right. It's actually, I guess, a lot of things that we need to learn about that in order to be able to, to know. And I'm not 100% sure, but I think that this program, you actually can be out of Connecticut and still have coverage. But there's always changes, but we've got to do a little reading.
Right. I agree. All right. Well, thank you, Mr. Zagami. Any, if there's nothing else, I'll recognize Counselor Parker.
I make a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Moved to adjourn by Parker, seconded by Heath. All those in favor of adjournment, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining. So, moved unanimously, eight to zero. And we are adjourned. Thank you.